A couple of loose ends we need to clear up before we got started. This time I'll call the January 15, 2013 meeting of Ardell County Board of Commissioners to order, and we'll have an invocation if you'll join us in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we again thank you for the opportunity to serve you and the opportunity to serve people this county, and we pray for wisdom tonight and understanding. We pray that you'll be at work in the hearts and minds of each one that'll stand before us tonight, that you'll calm their anxiety, you'll give them clearness of mind, you'll give that to us as well, that we'll make sound decisions and everyone will leave here with a clear understanding and be of one purpose. We ask these things, that our county may prosper and that your name be glorified. We ask it in the name of our Lord, amen. I ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call on our county manager, Mr. Ron Smith. Do you have any adjustments to this agenda from you or the staff this evening, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove the personnel item under closed session.
Okay.
And that's the only adjustment that I'd propose.
Are there any adjustments coming from any member of the board this evening?
Mr. Chairman, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference will be held before our next meeting, and we have, of course, a delegate attending that meeting, so I think it would be appropriate for us to add a discussion of the legislative goals and instructions to our delegate. I guess that would be between item G and H?
Or you just want to put it under new business?
Or you can put it under new business, either one.
Yeah, let's put, I've already got an item, Ms. Griffith, under new business, let's put it under there.
Okay, okay.
And I have a request, Ms. Griffith, concerning Board Governors on Mental Health. It seems they've accelerated that timeframe, and she needs to bring us up to speed on that, and that'll be under new business as well. Any other amendments or adjustments? Hearing none, I move that we adopt this agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. This evening, we have an appointment before the board. ICARE Executive Director, Mr. Brian Duncan, will discuss a Community Services Block Grant Program application for the fiscal year 2013-2014. Mr. Duncan, if you'd come up, please, sir, welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. Doesn't seem like it's been a year since we last presented our CSBG program, but time moves pretty fast. Probably around January 2nd, you received an email from me describing what the Community Services Block Grant Program looks like. We have operated this program here in the county since 1965. If you will allow me, I'll read a little bit about really what the program does. It is a self-sufficiency program. It's designed to help low-income individuals and families achieve self-sufficiency through case management. Our staff helps them through guidance, counseling, and assistance in the areas of financial management, job readiness, education, employment, and housing. It is not an entitlement program. Enrollment depends largely on applicant suitability for the program. Just in the way of some history, over the last three years, we've served, we were contracted to serve about 150 individuals, about 50 a year. So in the last third of that three-year plan, we served 63 of that 150. Out of those, 16 families rose above the federal poverty guidelines, 29 gained employment, four obtained employment with medical benefits, 16 completed education and training, three secured standard housing, 12 received emergency assistance. The annual positive change in income was $15,224 with an average wage rate of $9.55. Our targets are listed in the back of the application that you have for our next year, the next year being July 1 of 2013 through June 30 of 2014. Our targets are similar to this, and we typically take a three-year average to try to come up with our goals for this year. So our 2013-14 program, for the most part, will mirror what we've done over the past few years. We are, however, adding a new component. We're going to do a short-term, temporary employment, work experience-type program for probably about six of the participants, just trying to build some work ethic and to teach some soft skills that a lot of our participants don't typically have. If you have any questions, I know that was rather brief, but I don't want to bore you by reading that application to you. Most of you have heard it before, but I certainly will entertain any questions.
Okay. Does any board member have any questions, Mr. Duncan?
I just had a couple of general questions. I have some interest in it because I was a member of the ICARE Board a number of years ago, back when Paul Wilson was the director. But what's the total budget of ICARE now?
What's the total budget?
Yeah, I saw 3.8 or 9 billion, somewhere around that.
That's about right. It varies to some degree because that number probably includes some residuals from the stimulus funding, particularly in weatherization, and that will end this year.
How many employees do you have now?
Got about 85. So we're serving four counties, Ardell, Alexander, Catawba, and Lincoln.
You're serving Catawba and Lincoln, too?
Yes, sir.
We've expanded some.
We have expanded. We kind of grew overnight, and if you looked at this application, had an opportunity to, you'll see that in the last probably 10 months or so, we were awarded the same program in Alexander County. So this program has increased budget-wise, but the same dollar amount comes to Ardell County, around $168,000, and $48,000-plus, some odd dollars, will be spent over in Alexander County.
I saw you're now located on Shelton Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Is ICARE still on that house on Winston Avenue?
No, sir, and we're very happy about that.
Oh, okay. That's all I had.
Any other questions? I understand it is there's no action needed, other than review?
That's correct.
If there's no other questions, Duncan, we thank you.
Thank you so much.
This time, we'll declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to case number 1211-2, a request from Origin Food Group and Westside Real Estate LLC to amend a site plan for a light industrial conditional zoning district located at 306 Stamy Farm Road, Statesville, North Carolina, and being 13.35 acres. This is actually a continuation of a earlier public hearing. I'm going to, Mr. Todd, are you the presenter this evening?
Yeah. Good evening to the board. As Chairman Johnson stated, this is a carryover from our last meeting when the board elected to table the request. About a week after the last meeting, Origin Foods did hold a meeting on-site with the concerned neighbors involved with this case. Staff was involved in the meeting, and just several items were discussed in regards to the ditch on the Heinz's property or the gully, along with stormwater in general from the site. From that meeting, Origin Foods was going to start looking into some solutions, and I'd recommend we just have the general manager, Don Greenley, come up and address the board.
That'll be fine, but for everyone's sake, can I make a few comments before we do that? I want to clear up what has become fairly apparent to me, a misunderstanding of my intent when I offered an amendment to the motion in the previous meeting. And that is this. I understand that when Mr. Davis, who previously owned the property, built Homer's Truck Stop, he did it in accordance with regulation at that time. I'm of the opinion that if he were to develop that property today, the measures that were taken to preclude any water runoff to other properties and subsequent damage, those measures would not suffice today if that property were being developed today. I think that's a fairly, not being an engineer or having a planning degree, I think that's a fairly accurate statement from my perspective. So it was not my intent to attempt to force these folks to repair any damage that had been done because I felt like that would have been punitive since whoever developed the property, Mr. Davis, had done it, we can assume, with the intent of following the laws and regulations at that time. The intent of my amendment was to preclude any further damage to the Heinz's and subsequently the Boone property. Somehow or another, that was, and I apologize if I contributed anything to the misunderstanding, but it's come to my attention that that was interpreted, that this board expected the damage to the Heinz's property, whatever portion of it may be attributed to that, was to somehow be remedied. That's not, as I told Mr. Tartt from G.O. Wilson in a subsequent encounter, not being engineer, I can tell you water's going to go where water's going to go, but you can do something about the velocity of the water. My intent was to try to ask these folks on their property to do something to slow down the rate of flow of the water, at least temporarily, holding the water on their site till it could go down into the catch basin. Now, if that was not the intent of anyone who voted or any other commissioner in that meeting, you know, say so now, but that was certainly my intent, and talking to at least a couple of other members of the board, that was their intent, and they had that understanding. So I just, I wanted to clear that up before we went further. So, Mr. Todd, you proceed, and you call whoever you'd like to call, sir.
This is Mr. Don Greenley, Origin Foods.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. As Mr. Todd indicated, we did hold a meeting on-site on December 12th with concerned neighbors and representatives, and after, we kind of came to a general concession that to try and repair any damage on that site or in the gully would be really out of the question, and I think it was, again, just kind of a general agreement that we would look at other options and see what was available. I had talked some with G.O. Wilson and Mark Tartt, and again, found that in other investigation that there are several wet weather springs or springs underneath that property which have contributed to that gully development as well. With the assistance of Bob Stamy, we had also contacted the Ardell Soil and Water, and they are going to be out to the site tomorrow to look and see what other remedies may be offered and to proceed from there. So at this time, you know, I apologize that we are not as far along on development of a plan as we might be, but with the holidays and schedules since the last meeting, why, we are still making some progress, and we will continue to investigate and see what can be done. As to developing a basin on Origin Food Group's property to hold the water, that might be difficult, so we will look and see what other remedies can be developed to, again, slow the flow of the water down and prevent further erosion. Thank you.
While he's here, does anybody have any questions, Mr. Greenley? Mr. Todd, you know of anyone else who wishes to speak in regard to this?
I don't think so.
My thinking at this point, ladies and gentlemen, is because there was an understanding, and these gentlemen were probably pursuing a course of action that was outside the intent of the board, it would probably wise to continue this public hearing yet again. Per the advice of Mr. Roskowski, we're permitted to do that to a date certain, is that correct? Okay. Well, if no one has any objection on the board, Madam Clerk, when would be our, let me pause for a minute. Mr. Greenley, how much time do you think you'll need from this date? Another 30 days?
At least a month.
What's the certainty that we need to achieve before that conclusion? Just having a plan or having the work completed?
Yeah, have a plan was, what we expected, my interpretation, what we expected to have this evening, and I'm not fussing at you because we had a misunderstanding, was not to have the work completed, but to have a plan ready to submit.
I'd like to have another month so we can get the work done and get a plan for that.
Madam Clerk, what date would be our second meeting in February, then?
February 19.
Is that agreeable, Mr. Greenley, February 19?
Yes.
Okay. I would make a motion that we continue this public hearing to February 19. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Again, I apologize for any unnecessary work, but this misunderstanding caused and anything the board or myself personally did to contribute to that. Okay, we'll now declare the public hearing, meeting being a public hearing in regard to case number 1212-1. That's a request from Edward J. Patricia L. Kreider to rezonate 5.07 acres from Neighborhood Business Conditional Use District to Office and Institutional located at 2294 Wilkesboro Highway, Statesville, North Carolina. Mr. Todd?
Yes, tonight, we have a request to rezonate a property from NBCUD, CUD, to O&amp;I, Office and Institutional. The property in question is outlined in blue on the screen. It's rezoned Neighborhood Business CUD in 1992 specifically for a photography studio and nothing else. Since that time, the photography studio has moved to the Mooresville area, is my understanding, and the property is on the market. With that specific of a use, the owner is requesting to amend the use, I mean amend the rezoning to the O&amp;I, which will allow some additional low-intensity commercial uses. You can see here, this is on 115, just north of Scotts Creek and Sullivan Farm, where there's some existing commercial. You also have a daycare facility. You've got several churches in the vicinity, and then you've got some older grandfathered, non-conforming commercial uses. Staff does support this request based on the 2030 Horizon Plan. There's a commercial node at this intersection. The proposed district fits into the existing development pattern and neighborhood uses, and the O&amp;I district's consistent with the surrounding zoning. Also, potential traffic impacts for any use should be minimal. Again, this is a map showing the rural commercial node. This is a 2010 aerial of the property showing the existing business. Again, you can see a church adjacent to it, church kind of diagonal across the road, daycare facility, and then some other non-conforming grandfathered commercial uses. Few pictures, this is looking south on 115, standing up in front of the property. Looking north on 115 with the property to our right. Looking directly across 115. Looking into the site as it exists today. Looking at the church to the right-hand side of the property. Are there any questions from staff at this time?
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Todd? Hearing none, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? Would come forward, state your name. No one wishes to speak, then I declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the zoning map amendment, to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the 2030 Horizon Plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the 2030 Horizon Plan. This approval allows all uses as described in the table permitted in special uses, Section 2.21 in the Land Development Code.
Okay. Any discussion on Mr. Robertson's motion?
Only thing I'll say is this is not too far from me. I know several people in the immediate area, and none of them have voiced any objection whatsoever.
Okay, all right. Thanks, sir. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of motion for approval, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to case number 1212-2. This is a request from Charlotte Ski Boat applicant to rezonate 1.03 acres owned by the Lake Norman Volunteer Fire Department from Neighborhood Business District to Highway Business Conditional Zoning District at 1206 Brooly School Road, Mooresville, North Carolina. Again, Mr. Todd?
Yes, this request in front of us tonight is outlined in blue. You can see its existing zoning is Neighborhood Business, was rezoned basically some of it in 1990, and then the portion here in 2004. The request is conditional, and it's specific for boat dealers, sales and repair, and all train vehicles, and general office uses. The staff does support this request based on the consistency with the 2030 Horizon Plan. The proposed district fits into the corridor commercial designation in that plan, and the limited uses request, it should have a minimal impact on the adjacent properties, and potential traffic impacts should not come close to the road capacity.
It's the first time I've heard that.
For, um...
On this road.
Yeah, I agree. The property, again, is at the very edge of our corridor commercial district. The property here was recently released to Mooresville's jurisdiction. They didn't have any comments in regards to this request. Again, 2010 aerial of the property. This is looking back east on Brooly School Road, looking west on Brooly School Road. This is the property line just on the other side of these leland's with the driveway cut that was put in place by DOT when the road widening project was completed. This is a building on the backside of the property. That's the existing building that the applicant or the proposed buyer intends to use to remodel for their proposed business. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions for staff.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Todd, from the board?
I don't see it in our packet, but maybe I read it from the planning board notes. There will be no used boats and stuff like that stored on the property, like waiting for repair, or junk boats and stuff?
No, I mean, there would be boats, new boats, stored on the property, of course, boats waiting for repair.
Same new boats, I said junk boats.
How do you define junk boats? And maybe, maybe that's a question for the applicant, but we from zoning wouldn't, the way it's, the way it is right now, we wouldn't have a way to regulate one from the other, unless there's a specific condition added.
Maybe it was from the planning board notes that I read as opposed to what was, what's in our packet. I think that issue was addressed. Somebody can discuss it.
Well, if it's a boat repair shop, I mean, it would end a reason that there would be boats waiting to be repaired.
There's a difference between some and 30.
Yeah, I don't know how you define junk boat. I think on some of the, some of our ordinances, they defined a junk car as a car that was not operable and did not have a current license tag on it and that sort of thing, but I don't know how you define a junk boat.
It was, okay. Yeah, Mr., yeah, the notes from the, from the planning board said, it said, Mr. Muneely asked if repair work would be done on-site. They said yes, but there would be no junk boats. He stated that Mastercraft visited the facility and would not allow junk boat storage.
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Robertson, if I could add, trailers are usually titled, and I would look at an enforcement-type situation where if there is a boat and it is on a trailer, then it's an active title, similar to like junk vehicles. They must be actively titled in order to be clarified, not junk. And if there are boats just sitting in the yard with any trailer, we could, without a trailer, we could certainly enforce in those situations. So I think we've got some avenues we could probably look at through enforcement creatively to control that issue if it were to crop up.
I promise you, on Brooly School Road, if it looks junky, we will have people here expressing their dissatisfaction.
Mr. Robertson, in the, in the application, there's, on the last page, it talks about Charlotte Ski Boats would like to install fencing around the back of the property to secure the area and help prevent vandalism. I don't know if that would kind of get at what you're talking about, and I don't know if the boats would be stored in the back or not, but that might help with the appearance of some.
I can't imagine they would be in the front.
Okay, any other questions? Is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? Would come forward, please, sir, and state your name for the record?
My name is Lee Lewandowski. I own Charlotte Ski Boats. It's a company that I opened in 2010. We actually operate out of downtown Charlotte right now. We are looking to move our facility up to Lake Norman. The reason being about 70% of our business is actually done on Lake Norman. From this facility, we'd be about five minutes from the lake to be able to test drive and be a lot more efficient in our servicing of boats. No junk boat... No junk boats would be allowed in our facility. Mastercraft would not allow it. They're really held to a high standard. They make sure the dealer network does the same. So everything that's going on on Broly School Road is something that we would accent very well and not take away from. I can promise you that.
All right. Anybody on the board have a? Any questions of this gentleman?
I apologize for my southern accent. I'm not gonna dare try to pronounce your last name.
It does have a ski at the end, so.
Okay. That's appropriate.
We do appreciate you guys hearing our case today, too, so thank you.
Okay. I guess no one has a question for you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, what is your plan for the back?
The plan, the plan for the back is unfortunately, the barbecue shack kind of has to come down because it's in disrepair. We were kind of wanting to hold on to that because of the barbecues and stuff the volunteer department used to do, and we're really big with community. Basically, that pad will be saved and kind of a boat hoist situation will be in that area. So when we get shipments of boats, that's kind of where they'll be lifted. A lot, some gravel will go in and organized parking, because it has to be very free-flowing. I mean, most of our customers are extremely high-end, so the appearance of the facility is very important for our business.
Okay, good.
Also, we plan at about $200,000 worth of outfit to the facility and to the grounds. So it'll be transformed completely.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right. If not, we'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan. That said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the 2030 Horizon Plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the 2030 Horizon Plan.
Okay. We have a motion for approval from Mr. Robertson. Any discussion on his motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We'll declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of the abandonment and closure of an unnamed public road right-of-way located off Kemp Road, State Route 1446 in Mooresville, North Carolina, and adoption of an order to close said road. Mr. Oskowski?
Good evening again, board. Before you, you see on the screen an aerial photograph that highlights the area in question. It's actually a private right-of-way that was created back when the lake was originally developed. It was a logging road essentially. And the two owners on either side of this have joined hand-in-hand in agreement to approach you and ask you to go through the statutory process of closing this right-of-way so that they can then create an easement that will allow continued access on their properties. So that's the issue that's before you tonight. It's been properly advertised in accordance with the statutes, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. You will, of course, hold the public hearing, and then you have to adopt an order to close this road.
Yeah, I thought we had dealt with this last time, though.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Oskowski? Since this is a public hearing, we will consider any public comment at this time? Is anyone here who wishes to speak? Don't know that we've ever closed a road that didn't have a name, but... I guess not. We'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
I believe that we approve the request to close the road.
Okay. Motion for approval comes from Commissioner Boone. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Todd. Okay, that brings us to administrative matters. Mr. Smith, I'll turn it over to you for a bit.
I'm gonna turn the first three items, A, B, and C, over to Mr. Oskowski. He's got all three, and they generally deal with transportation issues, and I'll turn it over to you, Joey.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. I'm going to spare you of the details that are behind the transformation that we are making from one RPO eventually to an MPO and an RPO. But in order for us to remain, if you will, competitive and in the loop with future transportation projects as we join the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the jurisdictions of Mooresville, Statesville, and Troutman, as well as Iredell County have been asked to look at participating in the creation of the 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan for the MPO. And what you have before you is a list of 40 projects that have been thoroughly vetted through the staffs and the councils of, again, Mooresville, Troutman, and Statesville, and then this board tonight. I do have one addition, a project number 41, which was a late addition by the town of Statesville, city of Statesville, excuse me. And you don't have that in your packet, but if you'd like to note that it's an access road from Old Mountain Road north to Hanger Drive at the Statesville Regional Airport. And that was a, again, a late addition by the city of Statesville. Now, I, it was not my intent to go through all 40 or 41 projects with you. Instead, what I'd like to offer is if you have any questions of certain projects, you have seen most of these projects before in other comprehensive planning, long-range transportation planning documents. There are a couple of new projects. I also have invited Erica Martin with the town of Troutman, as well as Phil Collins with the city of Statesville. And I'm not sure if Mooresville was able to send a representative tonight, but you have recently been well-versed in the Mooresville Transportation Planning projects, so you should be fairly familiar with those. So at this point, I'll pause and see if you have any questions of me or the staffs from Statesville or Troutman.
Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna give, I would, I'm not gonna ask you a specific about the plan. What I'd like for, for the public to be treated to is if you could offer a brief explanation of why we are looking at a 2040 plan. Because I think a lot of times, there's a misperception that, that these groups get together, and then they decide, hey, let's go spend some money next year. I mean, this is a 2040 plan. It is, I mean, this is really looking into the future. If you can, for the benefit of the, of the public, if you can explain why this is done.
Absolutely. Thank you. Basically, the, say, North Carolina has an extended, a very long-range visioning planning process for transportation projects. And it begins with this 25 to 30-year scope out into the future of identifying projects which will later, in time, work their way through the state system and end up into the State Transportation Improvement Plan, which is a seven-to-10-year plan that's fiscally constrained. And those projects then begin working their way through from development to actual shovel-ready projects that are then built. So that's the range that we're dealing with, and why we're dealing with 25 to 30 years out in the future, is that it's a state DOT-driven process at this point. And the MPO, of course, will be our agency that will represent us, and we have a, a vote on their board as we move forward in that transition later this year. But they will actually represent projects, as it stands now, from the Yakin River south to the border, and all three municipalities in that region as well.
I've recently been appointed to the MPO board and got to attend my first meeting about a month ago, and we have one coming up tomorrow. With that, I've had quite a bit of input from the community on some concerns with item number 20, which is the hot lanes to exit 36, which are toll lanes. Do you know when MPO voted on this plan? It was definitely before I, I joined their board. But there's quite a bit of significant concerns from the community about the hot lanes, specifically that the cost is very high, and then the operational cost is very high, and the number of people that they pull to generate those funds, it's, it's a very small group of people. And that instead of widening 77, they're adding these hot lanes, which are tolls, toll lanes, that it won't actually relieve congestion and will end up spending quite a bit of money. Arriving on that board late, after the vote has already been made, is there any opportunity for input on item 20, or is it, looking at the timeline, it looks like this is, discussion is over, and bidding actually starts July on number 20. Can you give me any input? Because I go into that meeting tomorrow, and...
Sure.
Looking at what has been presented, there's, I have some significant questions about the cost of those toll lanes to our community.
Absolutely. And if, I may stand corrected, but I believe it was back in the early spring, I was actually invited to attend the very first meeting on these, this hot lanes issue. And it does have a lot of momentum at, at the state level. It is a public-private partnership whereby a concessionaire who wins a successful bid will actually build these and maintain, or build them and then enter into a 50-year contract with NCDOT. So this is a, an extensive, long-term commitment that we all need to be comfortable with in this area.
Right.
As this project moves forward. As, from what I understand, I believe it was in the May timeframe that the MPO first reviewed this issue. And it is on an aggressive schedule to the point where I believe it's, I believe it's later in the summer and into the early fall where that final financing plan will be in place, and, and the project will be a go, so to speak.
Some of the concerns that I've, and I, I hate that I'm late to this particular board, but some of the concerns are if in the next 50 years, the road is widened to bring a general-purpose lane, not only will the taxpayers have to pay for that lane through their tax, their gas tax money, but then we have to provide lost revenue to the company that built those roads for the tolls that they lose because there's been a general-purpose lane added. There's also no cap on the amount of toll because it's private that can be paid. And the more congested the road is, the higher the toll is to go on the toll road. Also, to use the toll road, you have to have a pass, so it only targets local residents. We don't generate any income in tolls from people out of state. We're just putting a higher tax on the residents of Southern Iredell County. So I have, I have problems approving, giving my stamp of approval to this plan as a commissioner because of item 20.
And if I could add, this is definitely a long-range plan. I'm sorry to interrupt, but...
Well, on item 20, it is not long-range. It is imminent.
Oh, absolutely. This item is, and that's exactly where I was headed with my statement, is that this project is so imminent that it may not fit into this long-range plan at this point. One thing I would emphasize is if you do wish to remove this project from this list, I would still emphasize that we could possibly support the general, or widening of I-77 for general-purpose lanes in the future. We don't want to shut that door for, for certain.
No. I absolutely support that. I apologize.
Well, this board, let, let me just make this clear. This board has the power to remove or add items from the list. We could pass this list and amend, we could amend this list and then pass the amended list.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought.
My understanding, though, the, the toll varies depending on what time of day you're gonna get on it. If you go to the time when there's high traffic, the toll will be higher than it will say 2 o'clock in the morning. I do have some qualms, as Ms. Griffith, I think wisely stated, that in, in the 50-year contract, if there's no exit clause for the state, then what will be the ratio of compensation for it? I know this thing's been gaining momentum for some time. I don't know if we're gonna whoa it up at this late juncture. Go ahead.
If I could, let, just so, just kind of give people a, a little history of, of what's going on. To, what we're talking about is widening I-77 between exits 28 and 36. This isn't widening I-77 up to Troutman or, or Statesville. It, it's just that eight miles. And, and for, for years, ever since, I know I've been on the board, widening I-77 has been on a, a number of these long-range wish lists. The, the problem is, is, is I can't, I would not even attempt to explain how federal and state monies are allocated for highways. It, it's done by regions and types of roads, and they have different pots of money for rural roads and interstates and all. There's a, there's a, a huge number of different categories that, that federal dollars flow and state dollars flow, and it is, it's extremely complex. It is not simple. The, the only system that is, approaches complexity is education funding, which is also incredibly difficult to understand, all the different formulas that they use. But the fact is, is those formulas are in place, and, and we, as in a board of commissioners, or the town of Mooresville, or the town of Davidson, we cannot change that. Now, as it was presented to us, is the cost of widening I-77 for those eight miles was gonna be such that if we allocated and prioritized and said that is gonna be our top priority to widen that section of I-77, that it was gonna draw down and consume most of our highway dollars for that one project for many, many years. So the decision was, do we do, is that the only project we're gonna do? And, and I say that generally, not as a, a literal, that there would be no other road project. But if we did that one, we weren't gonna get many others. So basically, I-77 widening kept getting kind of pushed down the list so that some of the other road, some of the many other road projects could be done. Well, the General Assembly has, has definitely been getting an earful from a lot of people because of the traffic on I-77 continues to get worse. In fact, I will tell you, there's a traffic jam going into Charlotte in the morning, and there's a traffic jam going into Charlotte every afternoon. It backs up all the way past, I live off exit 33. It backs up past my exit every afternoon. So, so if, so as you see here, we have a 2040 plan. If you want to get something built quickly, you know, it, it doesn't fit into the normal way that, that projects are funded. So the General Assembly, through their legislation, they authorized looking at, at some alternative. And the way it was somewhat presented to our board for the past year or two was basically, if you want to widen I-77, we can do it in about 12 years from now, but if you want it done now, this is your option. It wasn't presented to us as if, if you want us to fund it general-purpose lanes and no toll, we can do that, or we can do it as a toll. Which one do you want? Oh, you want the toll roads. That's not how it happened. It was, you can either widen 77 in 12 years, maybe, or you can do it now with a toll road. And, and that's how the, the whole toll road discussion came to be. Personally, pers, this is just Ken Robertson speaking as a, as a taxpayer, and that is, ever since I've lived here, I paid taxes to build roads close to Raleigh, near Raleigh, around Fayetteville, through some of the two-horse towns that were in the districts of powerful representatives who had lots of seniority in the General Assembly. And there's not a toll on a single one of them, and when I find... And when I finally want to get an extra lane on an interstate highway that is a major access point into the city, into Charlotte, that somehow now I've got to pay a toll for it. I oppose it on the grounds of fairness. If they'll put up some toll booths in Raleigh and around Greensboro and around Fayetteville, then, okay, I'll put up a toll booth in Iredale County, but I don't want to be, I don't want to be the only one just because, you know, just because we were last. And I, and I think, in order, if you would allow me, Mr. Chairman, just a few minutes to wrap up, you need to understand how we got here, because if you don't understand how we got here, then you won't understand what we have to overcome to get this problem fixed. Is, I would say, and again, I'm oversimplifying, there were three primary reasons why this road was not widened. If you look at the interstate and the major highways going into and out of Charlotte, they are either six lanes or eight lanes. The only one that's four lanes is the one on I-77 in Northmeck and Southern Iredale. So why did that happen? And I would say that there are three reasons why this should hap, why this happened. And we can, we cannot, one of them, it's done, one of them we could fix, but probably not likely, but the other one we can deal with right now. The first one was for decades, roads in the state of North Carolina were built on a, basically, a political spoils system. The governor and the, and the senior members of the General Assembly are the ones in the leadership positions, got to a point, the people on the Department of Transportation, and it was political patronage, and the roads got built where they wanted them. Yes, we provided input, but the fact of the matter is, it was a political process. It was governed by a Democratic governor and a Democratic Senate and a Democratic House. In this area, along this road, voted Republican. Now, I would say in the past couple of years, the Department of Transportation has tried to get away from that model, and I think they have. And I believe one of the reasons why I supported Pat McCrory as much as I did was I believe that he absolutely doesn't want to go back to that model. So the good news is, is I don't think the roads will be as political as they once were. The bad news is when we finally have a Republican House, Republican Senate, and a Republican Governor, we don't want to play by those rules anymore. The second reason was the causeway that goes over Lake Norman. Now, for 25 years, every politician, whether they were Republican or Democrat, voted for every bill that came up in Washington or in North Carolina that said the word Clean Water Act of, name the year. Because if you voted against the Clean Water Act, your political opponents were going to paint you out to be some sort of advocate of blatant pollution. Well, now the result of making the Clean Water Act more and more stringent on doing anything having to do with, with water and public water, we've made it where it's just about impossible to build a road over a body of water. It's not impossible, but it's incredibly expensive. So this is, this is the result of that. And then the last thing is, and I went to a meeting last night in Cornelius with citizens who opposed the toll roads, and every person who stood up, they started the same way. They said, "My name is Fred Jones," or whatever, "and I came from Colorado, and I've lived here for six months." Or, "My name is Jane Doe, and I came from New Jersey, and we've been here six years." Or, "My name is Bob, and I moved up here from Florida." This community was known as having a high income and, and not from here. They were disassociated from local government. They weren't involved in state government. They really did not have a sense of community. They were, they did not participate in the political process. And basically, I believe they were seen as people who had big wallets, and they didn't care about what happened to them politically. So guess what? They got stuck having to buy their own road. And of the, those are the three causes that I believe made I-77 the last highway to get on the list to get paved. And I think that's the reason why we're, we were, we're the only one that's going to be asked to pay, not only for our highway with road taxes, but to pay for it with a toll. Well, we cannot undo the decades of, of political cronyism which defined the Department of Transportation many, many years ago. We cannot change that, but I don't want to, I don't want to continue it just because there's Republican leadership now. The environmental laws that are written, that are on the books are not going to be changed anytime soon. We can't change that. What we can do is, as a region, we can, we can stand up and say, you know what? Everybody else got a road, and they don't have tolls on it, and we shouldn't have it either. So that being the history, and I, and I know that if we want it done quickly, we could, we can, we could go the toll route, but I think it's fraught with problems. Personally, I support what, what Ms. Griffith is saying that we should do, which is, even though this is probably a short-term project, I think the H.O.T. opposition is going to grow. I bet it won't happen. And when it doesn't, I would be satisfied that if item number 20, or instead of saying H.O.T. lanes, we just said widen I-77
General-purpose lanes.
And take our chances in the political process, that we can, that if this region will act with a, with one voice, that instead of that time period being 12 years from now that we get it widened, if we could change it to six or eight, I think that's, that's probably the best we could hope for. And I'm willing to at least make a symbolic stand. You're our board member on Mumpo, so I'll acquiesce to how you want to do it.
Thank you. Some of the data that I've come across is the HOV lane, or the H.O.T. lanes in Atlanta cost about three-tenths of a cent per taxpayer because of the pool of people. The area around Lake Norman is about traffic, about 150,000 people. It's going to cost over $100 per taxpayer to fund those lanes instead of three-tenths of a cent because of the area that we're pulling from. It's a very, very expensive project. And we'll continue to pay for that. I mean, once it's done, it will never be undone. And the current HOV lanes that are free are rarely used. So if the board would tolerate my suggestion, I would like to see that changed to general-purpose lanes, at least coming from this board as a recommendation. And I'll, again, voice that tomorrow if the board is willing to do that.
And you know what? We led the way on the train after we stood up and said, you know what? This is kind of crazy. Then all of a sudden, a lot of other boards got a little backbone to stand up and challenge the status quo. So I don't think that it's an exercise in futility, actually.
I agree with everything that's been said here. Would like to make a few remarks. Ms. Griffith, I make these remarks in case there's no unringing this bell to give you a fallback bargain position. And I base that on the history of this issue. And I did prepare a couple of comments. I'll be very brief. Those who express opposition to the toll lanes and speak in favor of widening the general-purpose lanes on I-7, I-77 have much to support their argument. I'm more than concede their points. I actually agree with them. Recount of history would prove beneficial. Our state finances have been mismanaged for about two decades. Whenever Jim Hunt leaves the governor's mansion, one thing is sure, the state is broke. It is worse. In his book, the politician Andrew Young tells of working in the Jim Hunt campaign. He writes of attending staff meetings with large maps of North Carolina on the wall and dollar amounts written on each county depicting how much was expected and how much had been raised, accompanied by a strong reminder that staff was to admonish local folks that if enough money was contributed from their communities, their request for highway funds would be viewed more favorably. A few years ago, a local member of the DOT board quick, publicly chastised local folks that if we do not render adequate financial support for the governor's reelection, we need not expect to receive much money in appropriation for highway projects. This gentleman should be congratulated for his honesty and his candidness, but he subsequently resigned from the DOT board. Political and financial loyalty have driven road funding for some time. Financial mismanagement for years caused a structural budget deficit that grew to about $1.5 billion previous to 2010. This shortfall had to be dealt with and was resolved in part by taking money away from the Highway Trust Fund and transferring those revenues into the general fund to pay for the favorite social programs of left-leaning politicians. Political cronyism combined with financial mismanagement over years have resulted in roads being built where the friends are rather than where the cars are and a severe shortage of funds for legitimate highway needs. It is important to realize that the problems we confront are exclusively the creation of the political class inside the Beltway of Raleigh, what I affectionately call Gucci Gulps. You know the land where they wear Guccis, drink champagne, and eat brie as compared to where I live, where they wear work shoes, eat pizza. If the preacher's not listening, drink beer at times. They're not the result of the actions of local officials of the DOT who work honestly with local governing bodies. Their recommendation for toll lanes is an honest effort on their part to alleviate traffic congestion with the available revenues. Having worked with these folks, I am confident, given adequate resources, this would not be their first choice. But it is, however, acknowledgement of needs and funding as they exist under the current method of funding. The vote of this board is not binding. However, it is valid input. We should express that the proposed toll lanes are not our first preference. However, should they be the course chosen by the DOT, then it is reasonable to expect an acceleration of the existing project's timetable along the I-77 corridors, specifically interchanges at Cornelius Road and James Howard's Road, since public money will be displaced by private money. With the use of private funds for the toll lanes, construction freeing up public money will free the requests, and we will fuel the project, and we feel this request is absolutely reasonable. So, Ms. Griffith, I would encourage you to pursue, communicate to these folks that this is not our first option. And if you have to sound retreat to any degree, expect them that I think it is reasonable that other highway projects along that corridor should be funded with money that has been displaced by this private investment. So any further discussion, or will
Ms. Griffith
Accept a motion anytime.
Your comments in the form of a motion, or?
Yes.
Okay. And the motion was to amend item number 20 to just widen 77.
General-purpose lanes.
General-purpose lanes. Would that be two exit 36, or do you want to put an endpoint?
It was 28 to 36.
Well, this, what we have here says the end is 36, so if you want to leave 36 as the end. I think would also be appropriate is a friendly amendment to add the item 41, the connector between Old Mountain Road and the airport that you mentioned.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah. Item number 41, was that right, Mr. Ruskell?
Yes, that is correct.
So we have a motion by Ms. Griffith to
Approve the plan with those two changes, adding item 41 and amending item 20 to all general-purpose lanes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item B under Administrative Matters for you is a request to adopt a resolution supporting amendments to the 2008 Mooresville Comprehensive Transportation Plan. This is a follow-up to the public hearing you had where you voted to support the plan, minus that bridge connector on Dooley Road or near Dooley Road over the lake. The Board of Transportation is requiring us to adopt a resolution after the town of Mooresville back in, I believe it was December. They also voted to remove that connector. The resolution I made sure was very clear on the history that happened and that that connector was removed so that there is absolutely no question in the future as to how you adopted the Mooresville Comprehensive Transportation Plan. So that resolution is before you for your consideration tonight.
Okay, folks. Any questions?
Just for the record, you can see how doing anything with a road over water, I mean, if it can stop an interstate, this, this idea of a bridge over Lake Norman connecting two minor roads together, when I-77 has hundreds of thousands of vehicles, this would have had singles, thousands of vehicles. That bridge, like I said when we debated, that bridge was never, ever going to happen, but we take it off and nobody's upset, so.
Well, y'all warned me out on this last time. Somebody please just make a motion.
I make a motion, Mr. Chair. We adopt the resolution supporting the amendment.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And the last item I have for you is a request. This is basically just to share information with you. There's no action needed by the board. There will be by individual commissioners at their leisure, but this is to comply with amendments to the State Government Ethics Act, and this is above and beyond what the full board has agreed to and executed before. This actually applies only to those of you that are appointed by the board to serve in a voting capacity, either as the primary or alternate member in either the rural planning organization or the metropolitan planning organization. Now, let me further clarify. Right now, the only organization that you are officially a member of, dues-paying member, is the Lake Norman RPO. So right now, this only applies to those of you that are appointed in an official voting capacity to the Lake Norman RPO. However, as soon as we make that transition into the Charlotte MPO, as well as in the north, the Unifor RPO, then at that time, those voting delegates to those two boards will have to comply with this part of the State Ethics Act as well. So I just want to make sure that you are absolutely clear on who this applies to right now. There are some deadlines. April 15th is one of those to file your paperwork electronically with the state, and then June 30th is additional state ethics, education, and continuing education. Again, this is separate and above what you're already required to do as part of the State Ethics Act. And I'll be glad to try to address any questions you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Ruskell? Reference was made to the financial disclosure form that members had to fill out. I tried to access it online, and you have to be a member to get it, have to have a password, so I couldn't view it. What exactly do members have to disclose? What information do they?
I would have to, I'm not sure if Mr. Pope is aware of that information. I have not studied that information, and I asked Mr. Pope to help me out with this item if that question came up.
I have some familiarity with it. You are required to disclose assets in excess of $10,000, loans in excess of a certain amount. I believe that's also 10,000. I'm not sure of the threshold amount. So if you are indebted to a bank, you have to disclose which bank it is. If you're on stock in a paving company, you have to disclose that. If you have to, if you own stock in General Motors, you have to disclose that. And not only do you have to disclose your assets, you have to disclose the assets of those who live in your household, family members who live with you. So if you have a spouse in your household who has assets, you must disclose those as well.
Do you have to disclose income, or?
No, you don't disclose your income. You just have to disclose sources of income. So if you have income from dividends, you would disclose that. If you have income from wages, you would disclose that.
You know, I'm all for stringent ethical standards. We're living in a state where we have a former governor, former Speaker of the House, and a former Commissioner of Agriculture who are all convicted felons, so I can, you know, understand the concern about ethics. But I really think that goes too far. disclosing ownership in a paving company, that's reasonable. Disclosing ownership of real estate that may be in the path of a highway project, that's reasonable. But some of these things, I think, go too far and probably discourage good people from serving on boards. I think they do. I would be reluctant to disclose all of that in I would be reluctant to disclose all of that information if I were on the board.
The board may be aware that I've served on the State Ethics Commission for the last six years.
Yeah.
So, I have quite a bit of familiarity with this, and I can tell you that there are instances where good people have refused to serve because of principal opposition to making these disclosures.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Ross Cassie? This is for information only.
Yes, sir.
If not, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item that we have is D, and this is a request for approval of budget amendment number 18 to appropriate funds for a bus to be used by the detention center, and Chief Deputy Dowdell is here.
Good evening. Don't hold the transportation thing against me, but we need a, what I'm asking to do is to transfer $75,000 from our fund balance to purchase a bus. This is a 2011 bus from Randy Marion Chevrolet, slightly used. The bus that we have, I got back when the furniture plant closed. Out on 21, they had my buses that I would use to evacuate the jail if I needed. Well, when the furniture plant closed down, the prison closed, my buses went away. I went to the school system, was able to get an 80 model surplus bus, and we brought it back, and we've used that ever since. And the bus now, we're having to take a lot of inmates, do a lot of transport, and having to run two vans at times, so I'm needing a bus that we can haul more inmates than I can in just one van, plus to upgrade my transportation in case I had to evacuate the annex or the main jail before I can get extra buses in here. So, I'm requesting to move that money and to purchase this bus.
Okay. Any questions?
It said in our agenda packet that your current bus had only been driven 150 miles last year, is that correct?
Yeah, that bus wasn't used for general road usage. We used it only from the jail back to the annex, or again, that bus was just used for sort of an emergency standby type of vehicle. It was not to be used for a regular transportation bus.
You intended to use this bus more extensively?
Oh, yes. Yes, sir.
And your justification is you're just saving staff time if you can haul more prisoners at a time, it's just less driver time.
Yes, sir.
What, it's mainly just between the annex and the main jail and the courthouse, is that?
Sir.
I said that the transportation would mainly just be between the annex and the main jail and/or the courthouse, is that?
Well, we're having to transport, now we're having to house inmates in other counties due to the overcrowding situation, and that's one of the reasons why we're going to need more room to haul these folks so we don't have to take two vans or three vans in some cases.
What type of bus are you buying?
It's a Chevrolet. I forget the model number of it off the top of my head, it's a 2011 diesel bus.
Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve the request.
A motion to approve, and it comes from Vice Chairman Norman. If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Next, item E is a request from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for approval of budget amendment number 19 to recognize Level 2 grant funds for the Barium Springs Home for Children.
Thank you. For the second year in a row, Barium Springs Home for Children has been awarded $100,000, Level 2 JCPC dispositional grant. This grant will be used to treat children who have been referred and adjudicated through the juvenile courts. 100% of them will be court referrals. They will receive clinical treatment for juveniles and their families. Each child will have eight, excuse me, five contacts a month. They anticipate to treat 20 children within the next year's period. There are no county funds involved, but the county is the conduit for the nonprofits to receive these juvenile crime prevention funds.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Blumenstein? Not all. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion that we approve the grant award and budget amendment 19.
Ms. Griffith offers a motion for approval. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item F is a request from the Social Services Department for approval of budget amendment number 20 for the appropriation of additional allocations to the crisis intervention and low-income home energy assistance programs.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Department of Social Services has received some additional funding in two energy programs, our crisis intervention program of $263,537, and in our low-income energy program of $140,889. And I am seeking the approval and recognition of these funds from the board.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Mia? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve amendment number 20.
We have a motion for approval from Vice Chairman Norman.
Thank you.
If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item G is a request for approval of the December refunds and releases, and there are no county commissioner names on these reports, and everything seems to be in order.
Okay, floor is open for a motion. I move we approve the December refunds and releases. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And finally, H is a request for approval of the December 18th, 2012 minutes.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion or discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm becoming the minute man or something, and I'll be the minute man with the rifle musket too, but I'm talking about this kind of minutes. On page three, under public hearings where it says consideration of economic development incentive, 11 lines down, it said, Carney said the park has been successful as the business employed 1,534 full-time employees. There's a dollar sign in front of the 1,535. Need to delete that, and then on page five, where it says motion by Commissioner Robertson authorized, et cetera, et cetera, it has voting five to zero, and that wasn't a vote, and it's got the rail vote down at the bottom of the summary of the discussion on that matter, so I think that item needs to be deleted.
Okay. See where that is?
Yeah. Okay. So, I'd move that we approve the minutes, those two changes.
Okay. Motion with those two changes, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Nursing Home Advisory Board, we have one announcement. Local Emergency Planning Committee, we have one announcement, and the Board of Equalization and Review for 2013, we have six announcements. We have no appointments to any boards and commissions that I'm aware of. Is there any unfinished business this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I had one item, as I mentioned, when we approved the agenda, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners meeting, state meeting, will be held before our next board meeting, and they're going to be asked to adopt a list of legislative goals and so forth, and I think we need to give some instructions to our delegates. To our delegate, there are a couple of concerns I had about their proposed legislative goals, and I'm trying, I know there are three in particular, and I'm, okay, looking for the page numbers now. On page four, I'm on the wrong one, I'm sorry. On page, yeah, okay, page four, I'll just get to that first. I hope the board members agree below on that, they may or may not, but on the legislative goals on page four, under Health and Human Services, one of them's oppose weakening of smoke-free restaurant and bars laws. I'm opposed to that, I think that law should be repealed. It has absolutely nothing to do with smoking in my mind, it has to do with personal freedom and property rights. I think a business owner should be able to decide how to conduct his own business. It also has something to do with local control versus state control, so I have a problem with that one. On page seven, under schools or under public education, under guiding principles, their proposal says the association strongly urges the General Assembly to support counties' efforts to fund no more than one school system per county, and of course, we live in a county that does have two school systems, and I think there's a lot of arguments to be made in favor of smaller community-based school systems. I think if a community such as Moores wishes to have their own school system, they should be able to. I personally think that as far as administrative funding, this will take another change in Raleigh, that all school systems, administrative units should be given the same amount per pupil, per pupil, for administrative purposes. The local boards should be able to spend that money as they wish, and that would solve the problem of city systems costing more. The cost would be the same per pupil regardless of how many systems you had. Of course, that solution is too obvious and too simple probably for politicians to pass, but that's my opinion. But that's another concern I have, under tax and finance, it says repeal moratorium on contingency fee audits. I'm glad there is a moratorium on contingency fee audits. To my knowledge, Iredell County has never conducted them, but that is a gross violation of any kind of principle of fairness to pay the tax collector a percentage of the tax he collects. That would be like paying a highway patrolman a commission for every speeding ticket he wrote, paying a judge by how many convictions they obtained or whatever. That's just a gross violation of principles. In times before our republic was founded, in medieval times in Europe and even in biblical times, tax collectors were often paid a commission, and that was always considered a kind of one of the elements of tyranny, a sign of an overbearing and oppressive government. In the New Testament, the Sadducees were unpopular partly because they were the tax collectors. You know, this goes way back. So, those three items I disagree with, and I would like to instruct our delegate to vote against those three items. There are a lot of other items I could discuss too, but those were the three that stood out.
Could I get a clarification? On the public education, you said you support a per-pupil allocation?
Well, I do.
And the school board determines, could you, what was that about administration?
That...
Could you say that again?
I would like to see, currently, the state funds, you know, superintendent, so many associate superintendents, so many assistant superintendents, et cetera, et cetera, depending on the size of your school system, if your superintendent has a doctor's degree, they'll fund more than if he doesn't, so forth. Personally, I would like to see that replaced with just basically a block grant per pupil for administration.
Period.
Yeah, period.
Just, I mean, you know, we've always said that.
Block grant, period. Yeah, and local boards could spend it for whatever they wished as long as it was for a legitimate educational purpose.
Okay, thank you.
That would be my preference, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Finn?
Well, I won't keep you here all night. They were the three I really had a concern with.
Would you like to place that in a motion? I don't have any problem with anything you say.
I'd put that in the form of a motion. If any board member has a problem with any of that, I'd be happy to put it in the form of three separate motions, otherwise I put it in the form of one motion.
Okay. So, we have a motion for those, for those three then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay.
You know, any comments or concerns about any of them?
No, sir, I made my notes.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna get you in just a minute, Ms. Griffith. I had that written down in the wrong place. Public comment, period, did anyone sign up this evening to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. New business, now turn things over to you, Ms. Griffith.
Mr. Chair, I took your position on the mental health board, and the North Carolina general statutes made some changing, changes to how the board is composed, and they have put a numerical number on how many board members we can have. Our board is made up from eight counties, and the number that they've capped it at is 21 voting members. We currently have 26, no fewer than 11 and no more than 21 voting members. And they put some parameters on members, particular backgrounds that members have to have. The current statute says there's one county commissioner from each county, and the new statute says one commissioner. And with the way the legislation is written, there's a concern that the county commissioners that sit on the board will not be able to fulfill some of these requirements, and the members that are going to be asked to leave the board will be from the different counties. We're currently looking at a system of maybe rotating the counties so that three of the eight counties have a county commissioner representative, and then those three rotate off and three more come on. It's very, very complex. What further makes this issue complex is that we have until October to get the board down to 21. This means that the new makeup of the board has to be taken to each of the counties, and each board of commissioners has to approve it. There's eight counties. This has to be done by October, and these people have to be in position. Another thing that further complicates this is, let's say that Iredell County, we are able to fulfill the requirement that one person have, individual has healthcare expertise in the field of mental health, let's say that we are able to fulfill that board member. In two years, when that board member comes off, in order for us to keep our representation, we will have to find a person that can again fulfill that spot, or another county will pick up and fill that spot, and then you will lose representation. Currently, the way the board is divided is each county was weighted by population, and then you were given that many board members from that area. That will no longer be the case. That will go away. It will not matter the size of the county, you can have a large county or a small county, you will be limited in your representation. So, we're working through this process, but I would like to make the board aware that it is, it is very, very complex, and there is a feeling that this is the state's attempt to make it look like the control is local, when actually, the control of who sits on that board is really being micromanaged from Raleigh. The other factor that further complicates this is that if we do not fulfill every single position, then the secretary, the Secretary of State will appoint someone in that position, and they, it does not give any parameters where that person will come from. That person can live on the other side of the state. The secretary will put someone in that position if we are unable to fill these board members to keep the control local. I am on the committee that's trying to come up with how we split this up and keep representation among eight counties. I will tell you that in one part of the state, in order to meet the first requirement that they had to meet, there were 19 counties that had to be merged, and they are going to be limited to 21 board members, and they must fill these spots and check them off. There are going to be counties that will lose their representation as this proceeds forward. And what I understand is that this is, this statute was passed, and we are expected to meet it, and there is no, no room to, the legislature is not going to look at this to make any changes, so we, we may lose our seat, the Board of Commissioners may lose the seat on the mental health as we... the mental health as we proceed forward because these specific expertise areas have to be checked off.
Well, thank you, ma'am. That, there's a couple of variations from what I understood, and the legislation was still being debated when I left the board. There's a couple of variations, but it seemed like the biggest thing is they accelerated the timetable.
They did. October, it has to be in place by October.
Okay. Do you know when they'll appear before us, asking us to adopt these changes?
We had our first conference call yesterday. We have a board meeting on Thursday. I imagine I'll get some direction at that point.
Would you make me aware of when you?
Absolutely.
When they expect to appear before us?
Absolutely. So it's, uh, I guess I, I should, I don't know if I should thank you for allowing me to serve on the board or shoot you.
Education.
And that's not a threat. Just for the record.
The, the temptation by some board, I'll just give you some advice, that the temptation by some commissioner members on that board is if they're a larger county, uh, to try to have their way.
Right.
I, I can tell you from experience, much can be gained on that board if you develop alliances with the smaller counties. If you do that and you look out for them, their devotion is undying. They really appreciate it.
Well, there are 11 specific positions we have to fill on a 21-member board. Then you factor in the eight counties.
It's gonna be, I, I don't think they realize what they put us through the first time, but it's gonna be much more difficult.
Well, and that was some frustration because the eight counties worked together very well to come up with the board that they have.
At times, we didn't.
Well, you all, it's working together, it's working well now.
Yep.
And now we're gonna uproot that and start over.
And I, I appreciate your effort and I, I have felt your frustration.
Never seen a committee with 21 people that was functional.
Well, I.
It's just too big.
But somebody asked me one time, we're gonna point a, we're gonna point a 15-member board, how long you think it'll take? I said about 15 minutes. And they asked me a month later, well, we're gonna have a five-member board, how long will it take? I said about a month. And they said, why? And I said, well, you can find 15 fools in 15 minutes. If you only got five, it takes a while to find five wise people. I mean, that's kinda what you go through. You gotta be more careful.
So how do you like being on the committee?
Yeah. So, let's see. County managers report.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith.
You're welcome.
Got, uh, two things for you tonight. One, I gave you, uh, two handouts. The top of the two is, uh, the proposed 2014 budget calendar. And not looking for an adoption necessarily of this calendar at this point, but what I wanted to get in front of you was primarily, um, several dates, but the biggest one is February 15th and 16th, the date that I'm at least proposing at this point for the winter planning session. And wanted to check to see if that is a agreeable date with you and we can.
These the same ones that you emailed us?
Yes, sir.
That's a Friday and a Saturday?
Friday and Saturday. And what I'm anticipating is, is probably a half a day on Saturday.
You decided upon a location yet?
Uh, short answer, no, uh, but I'm between a couple. Uh, the Ag Center, which is our standard, um, has something the night before, so it's gonna be difficult to set up. Uh, but we're looking at some other places as well, all local.
The, okay. I'll talk to you about that one. Okay?
And if that's, if that's okay, uh, I'll just point out basically three things, one, well, two more. The first is January 18th, that's, uh, Friday. We are going to basically distribute our budget, budget pa- packages to the department heads, and I'll be giving them their directions. So it's going to, you know, officially begin this Friday. And the other dates are going on down, May 14th, 16th, 21st, 23rd, and 30th. Those are just proposed budget work sessions, but basically that's when we're going to be, uh, working in earnest with the board. And, uh, we'll work on that schedule as we get a little bit closer. But I wanted to point that out, uh, as our general range of dates.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Anything else?
The, uh, the other thing that I have is the second page of your handout. And this is, this is basically a snapshot for you of our, of our revenue situation. It, it's a two-page, it's a two-page handout. One side's got a graph on it.
You got it, Steve.
And it's labeled sales tax.
You've got it, Steve.
Can I see David's head?
Right here.
Oh, okay, okay. Go ahead, I'm sure.
Okay. Um, and what I'll do is I'll, let me point you to the sales tax or sales taxes page first. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, you had asked about where we stood with, uh, with sales tax revenues to date. And, and I'll remind you that we do run behind, uh, on our, on our revenues and the reporting. So we only know through October where we're at. And I'll say that, uh, we overall, over the first four months, are down 3% from, uh, from what we were anticipating. Um, it's started out low, as you can see from the trend or from the graph. We started out pretty low in July. Uh, we were basically 13% down from last year. Uh, we've stayed low until October when we took a, we jumped up 13% over last year. Um, as you all know, sales tax revenues are very volatile and we, between Susan and myself, you know, we've tried to figure out what's gonna happen, but we have no way of knowing.
Are we 3% below 2000 FY 12? Or are we 3% below what we budgeted?
We're, we're 3% below 12. I'm sorry. That's, that's what this is showing.
And did we budget an in?
We had budgeted an increase this year.
So that gap's actually a little bit larger.
Um, I believe it is, yes.
Yeah.
But we'll, that, that's where, that's what we know now, and we will, um, we'll continue to monitor, monitor this. Unless you ask, or if you, unless, unless you want something different, we can give this to you every month, but I think what I'd like to do is give it to you quarterly.
Sure.
And just kind of, then you can see the trends as they develop.
If it, let's do it like this. If you see a month it just falls off the cliff, give it to us that month.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Now, if you'll turn over, this kind of, uh, completes the loop, so to speak, uh, on the backside there. This is a snapshot as of December 31st, um, of our revenues and expenditures. And other than the sales taxes, we're actually doing pretty good as far, from a revenue perspective. Um, I'll point out the avalorum taxes collected. Um, our rate, uh, percentage of the budget is higher than it was last year at that point. Um, sales taxes, as I mentioned, are lower. But if you go down the first table and if you look at the, um, look at the building and land development revenues, although they're not huge numbers in comparison to sales tax and avalorum, it shows that, that activity level is, is there and it's higher than it was last year. And basically what we hope is that that's gonna have a positive impact on the sales tax revenues. So, so basically those, all four of those departments, registered deeds, code enforcement, planning, and onsite wastewater are doing much better than anticipated. And then going down to the expenditures, which is the table on the bottom half of the page, um, we're running very level, you know, to where we should be. We, basically these should be reading 50% or lower, and that's, that's where we are at. So, uh, most of these are lower and, um, you know, hope to remain running lower than they should be.
Okay. I have one, one question, Mr. Manager. In the, uh, information you gave us in our last meeting, did I correctly read that information that you're anticipating about a one and a half percent increase in, in avalorum tax revenues for the?
That, that's what we had budgeted, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. That's still what you're more or less looking at, that's?
Yeah, that, uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. At this point, I would offer a motion we go into closed session under attorney-client. That's general statute 143, 318, 11A3. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to adjourn from the commission.
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dean, Mr. Robertson made a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Fill my name right, or else you're going to get corrected next week.